You wish to speak?
Paul?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Don't need to jump ahead of anybody, Sarah. All right, so, well, good evening. As you guys all know, my name is Paul Deegan. I'm the husband of Mrs. Denny Deegan, former director of the Law Enforcement Center. This is my third attempt to engage in open discussion with you guys on the Ramsey County Board on issues with the LAC as well as the unnecessary dismissal of Mrs. Deegan from her director's position. I am going to begin tonight with a special five county meeting that was held recently at the courthouse. You guys remember, dealt with the financial concerns of Law Enforcement Center and what is currently experiencing. I'm going to be addressing some points between the meeting, that meeting and one that was held about eighteen months ago. As you guys all remember, there were several special five county meetings. There were representatives from all five counties, the city board, judges, mayor, and even the state general inspector, that being Mr. Steve Ingham. Again, who if you remember stated that both Mrs. Deegan, this is why we're doing everything correct and standard as per North Dakota Century Code. I would like to point out one major difference between that meeting and this one. And the fact was that we had three VIPs in attendance, one senator and two North Dakota representatives. So, obviously, the LAC is in trouble. Obviously, you realize there are some problems that need to be looked at. I don't believe in any coincidences, that's why they were there. This situation was ultimately responsible for your actions up here or nonactions, depending on how you want to look at it. I remember when I first addressed this board, about three weeks ago, I was told that the LAC meeting would be a better venue to discuss LAC issues. But it's certain Ramsey County Board members that made it their business to micromanage both those new directors, Miss Hoyle and Mrs. Deegan, and basically caused all this trouble in the first place. Myrna herself made a comment to both Mrs. Deegan and Mrs. Hoyle after a meeting that they had both been set up for failure by the board and there was nothing either one of them could have done. That was kind of sort of setting confidence to them. But I find it very interesting how easily she speaks on both sides of her mouth because not longer than that, she was on the bandwagon with some of you guys on the board here pushing for their dismissal. Okay? Back to some of the similarities with these meetings, keeping in mind that the issues are far more serious now because everything that they said has now come to fruition and you guys are paying for it. Issues were brought up by the current LAC director, Mr. Reimy, that the basic problem, there's not enough inmates to sustain the LAC, which is true. Raising data rates was brought up, which would mean the counties have to pay more for their inmates as they're being housed here. No one better than I. Okay, when this was brought up by Mrs. Hoyle and Mrs. Deegan about eighteen months ago, it was met with hostile hostilities. Mrs. Heisler, actually, Mrs. Heisler, I'm sorry. Yeah, it wasn't Mrs. Heisler, it was Myrna, I'm sorry. She stated that there was a, I'm sorry, you don't have to let me get it back to my notes here. Myrna stated that the rates would not be raised and actually made the suggestion just to close down the LAC, which I think is ridiculous. But that's where we're finding ourselves. I do find it interesting that they were both right at the time and now it's a perfectly good plan of action to save the LAC. Ed? Ed? I'd really like you to pay attention to what I'm saying. Thank you. Appreciate it. Where's the outrage? Okay, where's the slamming of papers and the knocking on desks that Mrs. Hoyle and Mrs. Deegan had to contend with? I've heard multiple people mention state funding, but again, the LAC is a publicly ran private business with agreements between the five counties. There will be no state funding for this and I think everybody knows that, but people keep asking for it. Does anybody here know how many inmates it takes to literally break even to maintain LAC finances? Anybody here know? I see some nodding happy, but I don't know if anybody wants to answer.
Ninety-one?
Ninety-one, ninety-two is what it takes and that was put out by that five county meeting. Five of the twelve months in 2015 had that amount of inmates. In 2014, nine out of the twelve months. And more than that, Mrs. Deegan was over at sometimes one hundred thirty-seven inmates a day and actually had to contact the state and the feds to reduce inmates because they had too many. Okay? That is not the case now. Even 2016, January, February, March, we're all under that amount. The only reason they got into the black was because of payments that were brought in by Bureau Prisons and US Marshals because of their inmates and the money that they owed the LAC. Bottom line, an increase of inmate count is the only solution to the financial problems at the LAC. So logically, why not get more inmates? Or can you?
That's your five minutes, Paul?
That is not the five minutes.
Yes, it is, it is five minutes.
Yep.
Thank you. You are done.
Do I only have five minutes?
You have five minutes.
Is that for everybody?
Yeah, and five minutes unless approved by chairman.
Was Mr. Heisler approved by the chairman two weeks ago and spoke seventeen minutes and forty seconds?
I have no idea, I just.
You were there.
I was there.
You were there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I also believe that we need to limit this to five minutes. I don't understand where all of this is coming from.
Well, that I believe, that I, I do believe that, Mrs. Heisler, you agree with that.
I think so, I believe that five minutes is sufficient to hear continually concerned.
Meaning?
Meaning we're done for today.
I'm asking her, I'm not asking you. I'm sorry?
I'm done.
Move on. I hope you can move on past these issues. It's not an issue because I will be back at the next meeting and I'll just pick up exactly where I left off.
Okay.
How does that sound?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Before I do go, I would like to give two business cards to the two gentlemen that I do trust on this board. If anybody wants to get ahold of me, please do. I mean this board, I mean the city board, I mean representatives from the five counties. Whoever wants to get ahold of me, do so through these gentlemen.
Thank you. Steve Nelson?
I was approached this week by Sarah Bertrand from Thursdays and she had a request or kind of a suggestion of how... She's been approached by several people to provide their liquor license services to special events in the county. But since her liquor license is issued by the city of Devils Lake, she is not allowed outside of the boundaries of that parameter because of who issued the license. Okay? So which limits her so she can't go out to, let's say, Peterson Arena and provide a dance, you know, for a wedding dance or another function because her license is restricted to the city of Devils Lake. Okay? So her request was, what, is there anything that we could do to facilitate her opportunity to do some of these wedding dances or special events outside? And I had lots of checking and so was she. We've met with Candy and Missy Teskey from down at the Attorney General's Office that does the licensing. And she said there is nothing to say that Ramsey County could not issue her a county liquor license out of her local establishment in the city of Devils Lake, which would allow her to remote out, just like all, you know, like the COVID does, to do off-site special events. And I guess that's what we're in front of and that's why Sarah's here tonight. Because, you know, it's, it's an opportunity, you know, they have a chance to... The only one right now in the county that I know that's doing it is Pearl's Lakeside because they have a county issued liquor license. Everybody else is restricted to the city of Devils Lake. So I guess the question before the board is, is would you entertain the opportunity to allow our city to apply for a county liquor license, which would allow them to service these special events?
Do you see any problems with that?
I, I don't see any difference really for us as far as, because they're an established establishment and they're doing business. So the rules that are enforced within the city are the same as are enforced in the county as far as these special events. So I, I guess I don't see any added problems. I mean, if they don't hire her, they're going to hire Mr. Presinsky. So somebody's going to be doing it and I guess it's not going to, I don't feel it's going to be anything extra for our department to handle because we're going to have to be there with them anyway. It's like we, like we do right now.
Steve and I talked yesterday, it's going to be fine.
So is this a standing liquor license or just a temp license every time there's an event?
It would be a manual liquor license for the facility in Devils Lake, just like the city gives to her. And what it comes down to is because of the jurisdictional line of the special events, say, at the Peterson Arena, being outside the city, the, the city can't give a special permit for the off-jurisdiction site.
Outside of the jurisdiction of the city, can only authorize a liquor stash within their jurisdiction. So I know she also brought up, they were talking about possibly doing a beer garden out at the Mud Run, which is across from ads, which is county property. You know, so that's another opportunity for her to... And she said she's had, what, five or six people have asked you to do weddings? So she's got, you know, there's an opportunity here for some competition and I guess I don't see any difference if there's one, two, or three, or...
And the license wouldn't be allowable for any bar or liquor establishment?
Liquor establishment, yeah.
Licensed to serve alcohol.
Are there any other companies that we know that are handling it this way?
I haven't heard of any, but...
When, when you get the liquor license questions, you go right to the AG's office. They, that's all that agency does and the liquor licensing division is liquor licenses. So...
And she'll have to comply, she'll have to set up a diagram, I think you have to send in a diagram of where you're going to have, you know, like, so if she says Peterson Arena and she's going to have to send a diagram to the Attorney General's Office. And then pay their fees and then they'll have to, they'll approve it or not. And then once she gets that approved as an off-site location and they're fine with it, so...
I have one question.
Okay.
Candy did some research on it also and so we're going to sell them the full liquor license, which is the $600 a year. And then they apply for the off-site, which would be the extra seventy-five with the drawing, correct?
I don't know what the fees are, I mean, I, I'm just checking on the, I was just checking on the...
So that's the same as the city then?
It's the same as what, like Pearl's...
I mean, that's what we pay at the city is seventy-five.
Right, per off-site.
Okay.
So you would have to pay the $600 for the whole year and then the seventy-five.
Every event?
For, for, for every special event?
Every event?
Every special event you want, whole.
So that would be the same as we do for the city?
Right.
Yep.
And then in order to get a liquor license out, usually the townships have to approve. So are you thinking just like Creel and proper grow or, because we have to send out a notice to the townships to get that approved?
The only reason I did this in the first place was because of the Peterson building and for this Mud Run.
Okay.
No, I don't want to go to McHenry or...
You don't want to go to Rockton or...
No.
They won't be in Creel.
So it'd be both in Creel? So in the year?
So is, so is every, I just, I just had to back up. So is every county liquor license pre-approved by the township that, that entity is located in at this time?
Not annually though?
No, not annually, just the first time.
Just the first time, you'd have to get Creel film just to sign off on it.
Like the racetrack and, and Woodland Resort and Ackerman Acres and all of those.
Well, so anytime we had someone coming to us requesting a county license, we couldn't approve that until the township had approved it, is that correct?
For the first time, yes, the first time they're applying for one. But the ones that have been through the county, it's an annual renewal, so we don't go back to the township.
Right.
If there was an issue, the townships would come to us beforehand.
So she did this every year, she'd just be the first event, first time. And she'd have to get through with that and once it's a renewal, it just continues to...
Right, we just charge her the $600, we send her off the paperwork and...
Anything I missed there?
Well, we, we generally do that at the end of each year, at the beginning of each year. So she would have to be appropriated for this year then, or would she have to pay the full amount?
Well, ours, in the city, they're July, of course.
In July. When ours, I think they're the end of the year now.
Where's the end of the year?
There's some in July that are doing it.
Yeah, no, we approve them throughout the year and there's a couple different types that we approve on.
But those are special ones too.
Our licenses do July first in the city.
No, but I mean, we don't approve all county licenses in the same month. Some of them are in July and some are in December, I think.
Because there's a liquor and there's beer license, there's two different types that get different times. We can work with that though.
So we can work through that without any problem?
Right, we can appropriate hers for the year.
So the township would have to approve it first before we would be able to let the license go?
Right, we send a letter out to the township and just have them sign off on it.
Okay.
Then Sarah would probably have to sign that letter. And then Creel Township probably meets every month, third...
Okay. See, if, they want me in July, that's why I was kind of going now, I told you I could have ready by the end.
We should be able to get it done by then and... So meet with Elizabeth and, and help her with the application, the township and...
So I don't... Like tomorrow? Or what?
Um, yeah, tomorrow will be fine.
Anytime?
Well, first we should send a letter out to Creel and tell them that they're applying for...
But I have to do that or you?
No, we do that.
Okay.
And then once we get it back, we usually give a few days, I'd have to read the letter.
Okay, so you'll take care of that and then you can call you?
And then we'll call you and have you come in and get the application done.
Okay.
But the board, the first thing they need to do is allow this, make a motion to allow it.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to let Sarah apply for a liquor license through the township for our approval.
All of the second that first discussion?
Elizabeth sent out a letter.
Are we going to make this a blanket policy or are we going to have each borrower come in? I, I perceive that if one borrower comes in and does this, the other, some of the other borrowers will do the same. Do we need to make this a blanket policy or are we going to do it on a per-owner basis?
I think they'll come in as they, as they wish to apply.
Pretty much set a policy now, this is probably the way it's going to go, so...
I think we need to develop a policy now so we don't have to have everybody coming in one at a time as this situation arises.
Do you have any ideas there, Elizabeth?
See how it goes and then write up a policy if we get more than one application.
I guess I'm, I'm, I agree with Myrna to the point, I'm fine with getting going for her and then we can just develop, just grab rules on how I want to treat it every time and maybe look at it in a meeting or two and adopt the policy so we have a standing so borrowers know how to treat it every time, we're going to do it then.
Go in the policy and... Did you have a question in the back?
No, I was just agreeing with the like, just what you're going with. Because it sets a standard for all the others, a ballpark figure where they're going to be.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Or a second?
A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried. And then as long as you're here, Steve, we're going to skip down to the letter of resignation by attended care.
Okay.
Give us a quick little run at.
Monday morning, I received a, a letter from Cindy Olverston resigning her position as our attended care coordinator. Um, we did meet on Tuesday morning with our board, Judge Fowley, the Juvenile Court Administrator, Sean Peterson, I think his name is. Rhonda Allery, Adam was there, myself, and, you know, and then we also have, Rhonda brought with her a person from her office that is willing to take over the coordinator's position and work through it. So we've already pretty much gotten everything taken care of for now temporarily until we, we're still up and running. So we shouldn't miss a beat and we'll just move on and move forward from here. So we're still sitting, we got a few things we have to work out as far as, you know, what that coordinator position and how it's going to be funded and who's paying, you know, but those kind of things. But, you know, we're, our board is working on it and, and we're well on our way to, it should be seamless at this point to try to keep it going and we're still up and running as of...
So I'll make a, a motion to accept a resignation.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second to approve a resignation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion? Opposed? Be non-motion carried.
The one thing I would like to note...
Unless you're done, you're not done with your discussion or...
I'm done. There's not much else, I mean, we're done.
The one thing I would like to note is I appreciate Cindy's hard work on getting it set up. It's taken a long time and it's been frustrating for her, so... She's done a good job in getting everything together and now we can hopefully get the ball rolling and actually use the facility, so...
Ed, I did thank her on Monday before she left for, because she did quite a bit of paperwork and, and getting that lined up for us.
Yeah, and also, I think it was Cindy was camera for the last name.
Cindy, and her last name starts with a G and I don't know where her last...
G-L-E-N-D-E.
Okay, Glendee, I think it is.
Yeah, and...
She's going to be the new coordinator by the way, at this point.
Yeah, she's a co-chair.
Rhonda's kind of absorbing that into social services because they're the ones that are utilizing it as well as attended care, so with their foster care and their shelter care. So it's kind of a good fit at this point. And I have contacted Lisa John, who's the head of this, and she's completely fine with everything we're doing, so everything's square and we're good to go.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, one thing we didn't talk about at our meeting is we have to keep track of hours appropriately because if it's attended care, it can be reimbursed, if it's shelter care, that's our dollars.
Attendant care is reimbursed for federal dollars from Biz Mark.
So we have to...
Shelter care is funded out of Rhonda's salary from social services, from whoever she gets it. So, and that's something that a coordinator is going to have to deal with and so we can, I think we're still in good shape.
Yeah, she seemed to be on board a hundred percent, so it looks like we're all in the right direction as well.
I think this is a real opportunity for all these teams to prove how well we can work together between Juvenile Court having Sean Peterson and Judge Fowley there and Social Services and Law Enforcement. Hopefully, the next step will be to get the school on board with it as well and, and we can prove that we can, with a coordinated effort, we can do things to help keep kids out of the Juvenile Court system.
And we had a lengthy discussion on Tuesday about that exact topic. We're not about having this, getting something involved with the school. And I think there's a meeting on Thursday morning with the school to discuss these issues, so we're, we're moving forward to that too.
And I should, I should make note of it all made as quickly as possible that we, we've worked at the school previously. Part of our, our little group that went to Chicago, we applied for a grant through Social Services for diversionary services, we have a, we have restorative justice now. Uh, that will be in the school system at the middle school is what we're going to target and it's going to be cross-trained with their staff and our social services staff. So trying to do that pre-diversion stuff, try to get the kids stopped before we get them in the system and, and that's part of what we're working on too on this Thursday meeting is we're going to attempt to possibly set up an out-of-school suspension program where we can utilize the attended care at the same time to try to use the facility as much as we can since we have it, so... Try to provide the school some of those services that load, load at no cost so that they can actually utilize it, so that's what we're shooting for.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Anything else, Steve?
Does the board have anything else for me because I have another search and rescue...
Thank you.
If not, you okay with it?
Okay. Yep. You won't have to ask them to stay off the ice for too long or there won't be any ice. Probably won't be any ice pretty soon.
Well, like I said, we got a search and rescue, we got called out on Saturday to get seven people off the ice that couldn't get off. Two of the UTVs went under the ice, they got the third one off and we had another one at Dry Lake and...
Nobody's gotten hurt yet.
It's just, no, knock on wood, but that's what it's going to take, I think, to keep these people off there and it's, we don't want to get to that, but I've been on the radio several times telling them to stay off and they don't listen, so, but...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Unfinished business, valid information?
We have nothing yet.
We have nothing yet.
We'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay. Approved letter of transfer?
Still moving on.
Second? Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Approved voucher to the NDSU Extension Service?
Oh, wow.
A motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Be non-motion carried. Approved Lake Region Law Enforcement Center billing? There's a motion, is there a second?
Say it.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
They should hold the roll call.
Hold.
Can I do that, first one real quick?
Okay.
Um, Brown?
Aye.
Myrns?
Aye.
Lycon?
Aye.
And Olson?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Okay, now the second one.
Law Enforcement Center billing?
Heisler?
Aye.
Myrns?
Aye.
Lycon?
Aye.
Brown? Olson?
Aye. Motion's carried. Brown, thank you for the... Any announcements?
Paul's out on the agenda.
Oh.
But he has something to mention.
Oh, Steve's got Steve's name under there, sorry.
You're up, Paul.
Well, we took bids on number nine on Friday. Uh, good tabulation, I don't think it's a problem.
We just have to...
We need a motion to add that to the agenda or...
That's a good question.
Probably should revise it.
Motion is, we're always part of the...
Okay. I'll change that.
I'll second the amendment to add it to the agenda.
How is she going to?
Actually, Myrna, you need to second, or you need to revise the motion for the agenda to add Paul to the... Because you're the original motion. Are you okay with that? Okay.
I don't, I don't do it though.
Okay.
Commander, I'd say the alternate bid for Knife River Materials was by far below the... About twenty-nine thou, twenty-nine thousand below second bidder, so it was well under estimate. They really gave us some good pricing on the asphalt. Uh, the asphalt cement is way down from where it was on previous years, a couple hundred bucks, uh, ton, just about. So, and we worked with Knife River Materials before in the last couple of projects and have done, can work for us, so I guess I don't see any reason not to award to them. I drafted a notice of award for the commission's approval.
Just a quick question, Paul. In this alternate bid, so we're, we're getting less asphalt cement, how, how exactly does that work?
Um, the bid item for the pavement is wrapped super paved at eight forty-three, so they're using milled asphalt up to twenty percent as part of the hot mix, so they don't need as much oil.
Oh, okay, so we're just using, we're using more recycled product and less finished product?
Less oil product.
Okay, so it saves us some money there?
Right, and both, um, Knife River must have had stockpiles of it because there isn't any, we didn't have any milling on this project, so they were able to use stockpiles they had on hand, so the pricing was much lower.
Okay, good.
Oh, seventy thousand each of one.
And Knife River did number eight for us last year, I don't know if they didn't land correct?
Yeah, I think they done.
Seemed to have used two of them really well, so...
They were quick and...
Yeah, but this one's got a quick turnaround too, so I was going to ask about that. Let's see, I guess we'll do a notice of award first.
I'll make a motion to accept a little bid from Knife River for eight twenty-seven, two twenty-seven ninety-three.
All right. Motion in a second, we'll call.
Myrns?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Lycon?
Aye.
Brown? Olson?
Aye. Motion carried.
And I guess with that, we send out the contract with the notice of award and I'm not sure when they have the effective date, so we won't meet again until April fifth. I don't know if that was, because I have an issue with that, so Knife River does mean a problem for them. But I guess I just thought that that is the effective date unless you want to have a special meeting to award the contract.
What did you say, Paul?
If, if we don't meet again for three weeks. So I, I added the notice of award to allow for that so you can have twenty days from when they get their bids, when they sign their contract and send it back to us for the county's approval. But they could sign it on April fifteenth, or April fifth, I hate to start it.
So you just giving them enough time to get it back so we can approve it at our next meeting then?
That would take twenty days from now and the next meeting, is that correct?
Well, more than that, but they, they have ten days to get their, back to us and takes them a few days to get the bond, so...
So it's...
The only concern I have with that is that my, their completion date is the end of July, just so they can see what's coming up on the same roll, so...
Oh, yeah, I didn't want to get everything lined up so they're ready to...
They probably wouldn't start before, I mean, the frost won't go down before then, so it's a little reveal.
Wouldn't start until June one or something?
Yeah, I would guess it would be, you know, May or June, after the winter restrictions come off, we'll be doing the frost zone.
Do we want a special meeting or not?
Nope.
Should we just see if we're...
I guess we'll ask, I'll ask them and see along the list, but... I guess we'll ask, I'll ask them, and see along with Elizabeth, so...
So then we don't, we're just, we're not technically, we don't have to do anything with this then?
What was that, a notice of award, still?
Yeah, 'cause we, we approved the, not the, the bid.
Right, and then we mail them the contracts they sign, and then they send, the reason we have to review it again is 'cause they send their performance, okay, and bonds to us for review in between, uh, the... That's all I have on that, um, Kevin did have some other stuff on his agenda though. Do, do you guys have a copy of that?
Yep.
So this notice of award, do we approve that with the motion for accepting the roll-in?
Yes.
Or should that be separate?
Uh, that's the original of that, I guess.
Okay. I'll do the same.
Okay, so now we should get on Kevin's list. I was gonna just read this to you, so if you wanna...
Do we have to make a motion on Kevin's list about, uh, whether or not to accept the water and sewer line crossing request?
That's all, it's just getting to, are we... Suppose we need a motion. I'll just read the number one here first.
Would you wanna read it off, or, or, I can read it off after a while, if you would do that, Paul? Uh, Kevin says, "In regards to recurring utility permit for using the road right of way, my, his recommendation would be to not to accept the water and sewer line crossing request from Greater Ramsey Water District, granting them a, a plan to vary equivalency, like, if a variance could cause problems later. However, we should express to them that we're open to their requests and are willing to deal with them on a case-by-case basis." He's saying that right, right, if they wanna get one.
Okay.
So then the motion would be whether to not deny the making request. Whether or not to...
There are motion.
I'll make a motion to deny the request for the variance from Greater Ramsey Water District?
There are motion, is there a second? Second, with the understanding that, uh, Greater Ramsey Water District understands, and they're gonna make a special request each time they wanna do this, is that what you're understanding, Paul?
That, that's what I get from what Kevin's talked about before.
Have you talked to Kevin?
I haven't, for a couple of days now. I, I kinda like, I mean, we discussed it a little bit at last meeting, but, um, why he's recommending this, I mean, I guess I kinda understood why he was recommending it, but...
We have a motion in a second, I mean, change that, should we put it off the table until last meeting, it's here?
That's kinda what I'm, I, I was kinda...
I want everybody to understand what we're doing.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
That's exactly what it says, um, express to them that we're open to it case by case, uh...
So they're not setting a precedent here where we're open to, um...
No, we're not telling them they can't do it, it's just...
To, um, special request to...
They want to play...
Well, essentially, we're telling them we're gonna do it the same as we've done it already.
Yep.
Just not changing anything. Um, I guess, in the grand scheme of things, it's not the end of the world, we're not changing anything.
No.
We're, we're making a motion to leave it the same.
We have a motion to leave it the same. Yep. We have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Let's finish it later this year.
Oh, yeah, the Heisler, Brown.
Oh, Heisler, Brown, okay, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And you wanna do the rest of this time?
Okay.
Okay.
Kevin, like, motion to add bids for bids for, uh, Chippewa Project, Ramsey Number Eight C and Number Nine C.
Second.
And a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I'm gonna ask for a bid, motion for bids advertised for gravel in Ramsey County Town, west of Garcia, three and a half miles.
So, so, more? Second. There's a motion in a second? That's, is that a due right off highway hit?
From Highway twenty over the...
I thought the course inspection was going to ground it out because of the usage. I'm sorry, I...
They probably did, but it probably needs to be, be grabbled now that it's been worn through here too.
Uh, they, they did add some gravel during the project for all road restoration, but right after that got done, or as they're finishing up, Kevin had the road milled again, 'cause the asphalt had kinda set up over the years since it had been ground up. And they want, he wants to add some gravel to the top of it, now it'd have some more to work with on top of it.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Yep.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And he is also asking for gravel in the Curry Road north of Curry. Motion for advertising.
Advertising, well, you'll make a motion? There's a motion in a second. Motion in a second. All in favor, same, so, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Number three.
He's looking for a motion to advertise for quotes, I guess that maybe isn't necessarily a bid for, uh, Hot Mix Overlay. Just to skip past just...
I would make the motion to advertise for quotes for Hot Mix Overlay and Royal Oil.
Say.
A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And I know he was still working to get an estimate on the prices of the sewer system, 'cause I did talk to him one day about that.
Sounds good. Then five we covered.
Thank you. Any announcements or any other business come before the board this evening?
Yeah, it's...
I could ask to, uh, wish, uh, with the certainty again, invite, uh, the commissioners to the, uh, one, uh, several word meetings, and will be done Wednesday, March twenty-third, at Newland, at the college. Um, she, I think she's mentioned that, uh, email, but she did kind of reiterate that in the session. I, I believe, um, Senator Holden will be the guest speaker, so it'll be in the, it's been ten interesting minutes, I would have been...
I was just gonna say, not, not to fire a warning shot, but I was reading today that in the budget section meeting at the state, that, uh, uh, one of legislators, uh, I'm friends with, said that, that fund for the twelve percent property tax buydown, uh, last session, or la, this biennium was six hundred and fifty-seven million dollars they spent. Going into next biennium, they're only looking at three hundred million in the fund. So they're gonna be probably three hundred and fifty million dollars short. So, it's gonna, just, it's one thing we're gonna have to think about coming up here in July, that the state's probably gonna have a tough time coming up with twelve percent if they can, so we're gonna have to think about it when we budget. I just saw that today, it kinda, kinda caught my eye. I don't know if that's what's gonna happen or not, but...
We're gonna have to tighten the reins in this outing.
I think we're gonna have to a little bit.
Anything, Bill? Ed? Pardon me? Do you have anything to say? No, no.
I've got, I've got one quick question before we go, um, this letter from Dale Kamara, the fellow who ran off the road up by, um, on that Tom and Tommy line, and then in there doesn't say that he wants to be paid for his vehicle, um... There's this whole estimate, and, um, there's no, there's no cost on it. She said, "I believe the vehicle is damaged beyond its value." So, what do we ask him for besides the four hundred and eleven dollars?
I talked, I talked to him today, he was just gonna go with it, whatever the estimates came up with, and apparently it is in the hands of, uh, North Dakota Insurance Reserve right now. And that estimator went out and agreed with the estimator that they had do it originally, but he didn't wanna put that in there because he said, "We're gonna go with whatever the dirt wants to use for an estimate." He just found that out, so that's where we're at with that.[1739.01]